All right, it's 6:02 PM, January 23rd, 2024. We'll call the City Council Special Meeting to Order. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly? Councilmember DeMonaco?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilmember Bushadlick?
Here.
Moving on, the first hearing of the public. The hearing of the public is open. Would anyone wish to be heard? Would anyone wish to be heard? All right. Kathy, you don't want to be heard, did you? I saw you walking back. Seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed. New business, goal setting. And council, I wasn't sure how this was run last year. Obviously, we're all in receipt of the list of different categories. Did any council member want to start off with discussion?
I guess we, I mean, if you're okay, we can go category by category and just kind of, I guess, if we have ideas or anything other, any additions to what's presented.
Sure. Well, let's just start off with the first category. Public safety. And did any, how do you want to go through this? Just listing the projects there and?
Yeah, I don't know if anybody, if the rest of council wants to prioritize one or the other, or if council feels that the list that currently is in front of us is a good starting point, just top to bottom.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and read out for the benefit of anyone who might not have the document watching the meeting. The projects listed under police, or under public safety. Overarching goal, maintain a high level of public safety with an emphasis on public engagement. The projects listed are police department accreditation, regular neighborhood watch meetings, fire safety programs in the community schools, in the community and schools. And provide consistent and specialized training for members of public safety, implement new technologies to enhance community safety, flock, flock, et cetera. Is there anything that our police chief thinks needs to be added to kind of those goals that are listed there? Okay. Oh, sorry, fire chief as well. Is there anything in there? I, in terms of the overall goal, Ms. Walton was just saying that they kind of drafted that and added that to the documents. Does everyone agree with sort of that being our goal? I think it's broad enough that we can just leave it as is. And do you think it would be helpful for us to prioritize these goals?
Um, I don't know if they necessarily need to be prioritized. I think all of them kind of work in conjunction with each other and will kind of, over the next year, kind of work together essentially to get those things done.
Okay. Did any one on council want to add any goals to this?
I have some questions, and I think maybe either Cory, Police Chief Haynes, would be able to answer it. It's with respect to the FLAC, the Falcon License Plate Reading System. How much would something like that cost us to implement?
Well, I believe that we have a grant that's able to cover the entire, at least the first year. Each flock camera is right around $3,000. So that would be a continuing cost going forward in future years. But for this first year and the initial implementation, I believe we have a grant that covers the entire cost.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? Were you saying 3,000 per camera? Is that the license fee or the install fee you're saying?
That's everything together. So that's the install fee, the licensing fee. I mean, everything is rolled into that initial price.
What's the license fee expected per camera after that, after the grant would be out?
The same. It's the same price.
Oh, so installs zero dollars?
Basically zero dollars, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I do have one. With that, is there any idea, and this might be a broad one, but is there any idea of like how many of these we would need or around the city? Would it be on the major roads or?
We did have a map that was designed. I was not part of that design, but I have reviewed it and I agree with the placement of the cameras. And right now, it's looking like 18 cameras total.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I forgot it was in the back of the package. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to category infrastructure. And again, I guess I'll list these off for anyone watching the meeting to know what projects are listed. Well, the goal is listed as maintain and improve all public infrastructure.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Can we go back another question about one of the other items? Sorry. All right, real quick, back to public safety. Can we talk about the police department accreditation a little bit? I think maybe we've touched on it in the past, but just like overall what it requires and the like main reason for doing so?
Yes. So Police Department Accreditation is through the Michigan Association of Chesa Police. It's an accreditation program that is very similar to Kalia, which is another one that's on, kind of on the West Coast. It's a lot more intense. But what it does is it forces the police department to review all their policies, procedures, their safety, the security of the police department, the security of evidence, all kinds of different things, and overarching review of the entire police department to make sure that we are following the best practices nationwide for police in general. And what it would entail is we really don't have the staffing where we can actually take a person and assign them the entire project and have them work from start to finish. So the thought was to hire the company, the Rosso Group, which is doing accreditations across the state. It's about a $40,000 initial fee to have it done, but then once we're there, then we would have the personnel that would be able to keep up in future years with the accreditation program to make sure that we're following best practices.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right, moving on to infrastructure. The goal for this area is maintain and improve all public infrastructure, including major and local roads, utilities, storm drains, and sewers. I'm not going to list off everything here just because it's different, different projects, but to sum it up, it's road projects, joint sealing program, pavement patching, lead water sewer, line replacement, sewer rehabilitation and catch based in repair. I mean, I think this is kind of fine as is, just identifying all those things that we have to just keep doing. We'll never get ahead of it, but you know, we'll try to keep up. Does anyone else have anything they want to add to that?
One thing that I, Mayor, that I was looking at, I noticed on Nine Mile, and I believe on 10 Mile, that we've switched to some of the illuminated larger street signs, and I think for safety purposes, especially like when you have bad weather, those signs are nice because they're easy to see. I would imagine we wouldn't go every single street, but you know, like with some of our major thoroughfares or, if you will, or safety routes, bus routes, and things of that nature, if that's something that's doable, I would like that.
And can I, is Darren over there? Oh, I don't know if you can, if you can comment on that, because we don't make our own signs, right? We replace this as we go along?
Mayor and council, we do make our own signs, but I believe Councilman Baker's speaking about the, the updated ones that we put on Nine Mile and 10 Mile with the traffic signal modernization projects?
Yes, I think that's the same thing.
Yes.
Big illuminated sign.
So yes, Ryan, I mean, those will come with the, with the modernization of those traffic signals.
Okay. I wasn't exactly sure, but okay. That's all I had.
And did you want to like add anything goal-wise or just kind of leave it with the?
Um, I'll leave it because we have it listed as the signal modification. So I just wasn't sure. You know, I looked up one day they were there, but I wasn't sure that it was all part of just the traffic signal or if it was just independent of that, so.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to add?
I know I probably can't add it, but 10 mile road between Grashit and Hayes is deplorable. I'd love to see some kind of funding. I know, I know it's not feasible, but I'd love to see something happen there because it's really bad.
Have we heard anything from the county, do you know?
We have. We actually had a meeting with the county. We did send the letter that council had approved. We also had a meeting with their roads department. Initially, we couldn't get it in until at least two budgets out, and it was much more expensive than what we had projected. We did get an agreement from the county that they would send their engineers down to assess the road, and they could come down. Instead of doing a 50-50 split for a reconstruct, that they also have a, a repair program that is 100% funded by the county. And so they would assess this year and then could do some, some fixing to hold us over until we do get to a point of being able to financially afford to go 50-50 for a reconstruct on that section of the road.
Does anyone have any other questions? And I think Commissioner Lucido's been working on that too, because I know, I know some of us have been complaining to her, so. All right. Any more questions under that category? Moving on to city land and facilities. Goal, maintain and improve all city-owned properties. The projects that we have listed are, the projects listed are Police Court Building on Nine Mile, relocating animal control holding to DPW building, continued partnership with Habitat for Humanity, roof leak and pour drain issues at the library, renovating work areas at the library, DPW building updates, City Hall concrete shamrock, replace HVAC unit in City Hall, direction of remaining tax reversion properties. Would anyone want to chime in with any thoughts on this one?
I do. With regard to the police court building first.
Can, can I ask you to come up to you some, sorry, thank you.
First of all, I want to say thank you very much, Mayor Kleinfeld, for contacting me this weekend to let me know what's going on with the police court building and sending me the drawings. I would like to address this. I have been actively looking at new courts to see what, what they have, what they, what's good, what's not so good, so that we can kind of have a wishlist. But also talking to other community courts and finding out how they, what the process was for coming up with plans, for evaluating the plans, for moving forward. And most of them, what they did is they had a committee which included the, the police and the court. And included all stakeholders, really, and I think, thank you. I think it would be a good idea to do something like that, to have a committee that includes all the stakeholders so that we all have an active role in making this project come together. I know in Warren, they had people come in that asked questions of each department, each courtroom, tried to see how the flow of cases went so that they could design something that was ergonomic and would be good for the general public and for, and for court staff and for safety. So I think with regard to that, I would like to be included in, in the process. I think Chief Haynes needs to be in the process as well, and I would recommend that we form a committee to do that and set up regular meetings so that we can all share our ideas and our thoughts and be heard on the matters.
Thank you. Ms. Walton, do you want to give a sort of over, just overview of what you guys have done so far and what we, where we're at?
Absolutely. Thank you. So first, I'd like to highlight, and thank you to AEW. We started the process in getting approval from council to move forward. The very first step of this process was conducting a needs assessment. That needs assessment actually included an entire cohort of all stakeholders that were involved. The judge was involved in that meeting, the court administrator was involved, the director of public safety that we had at the time was involved, the deputy was involved, our building official, our planners, economic development, myself, Ms. Homan, the finance director was involved. So we had a very large meeting, actually half of us were on Zoom, in conducting this very lengthy needs assessment, which provided an opportunity for each one of the departments to share their needs, their operations, anything that they felt was lacking, or any concerns that they had at that time to start the process for AEW to begin this design. So that was the beginning of the project. That did take some time for the design to be initially built out. Last spring, we had the transition with our police department. We had Deputy Chief Hambright that transitioned into his role. Once that happened, he was brought into the fold and had a meeting with AEW so that he could provide his direct feedback into the planning process. When Chief Haynes joined us, we actually had an additional meeting so that he could also provide his feedback as he was going to be a valuable member in participating in the design of the building. This is just that first design. This is what, from that needs assessment, what was drawn out from both departments in terms of the needs of their operation. And then, of course, as we transitioned, we had a couple extra meetings to ensure that our new directors and deputies were involved and their feedback was also heard. And so we've brought this forward just as, this is kind of the next step, is bringing it to council to see if there's any feedback in terms of design. This is by no means a final design. This is kind of just coming to you guys to show from the needs assessment what the initial draft is. There are also some important aspects in terms of, now we have a roundabout idea in terms of costs, so we need to know that this is something the council's committed to. If a bond is something we're interested in going out for, having a conversation about a gun range. Obviously, a gun range being added to the, the back of the building is on part of the draft, but that is a topic of conversation from council, if that's something we should continue with. And then overall design and layout on the, on the property, if that is something that the council is supportive of, or if those design plans should change. So there is a long process ahead in terms of design, so we can plan to continue to have those conversations with all the stakeholders that have been involved. But again, having those continual regular meetings, AW does cost money, so we haven't had like consistent meetings in terms of design to redesign. This is our first formal draft from all of the feedback coming to council to see that this is something that they're willing to continue moving forward on. This is the first, you know, numbers in terms of the design of the project. And if there's any initial design changes that we should take into consideration before AW moves forward. We do have the bid out, council approved in the last budget to demo the Fergens property. That bid is out from AW, and I believe it comes back on February 6th. That bid closes. So in February, if not early March at the latest, council would have the opportunity to review bids and award a bid to move forward on demoing the property. So we are moving forward with the property, but it does take time to plan and process this large of a project. So with that, we can take any feedback that council may have, any direction that council may have, or questions, and we have Ryan Kern here as well that can answer some of the questions that you may have in regards to the design of the building as well.
Councilman Curly?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. First of all, I apologize for, oh, I should say present, Ted after. I, I had a procedure, a pacemaker put in Friday, and, and it's, it's extremely painful still after, since Friday, so. I'm suffering right now, but I, I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, about the range, shooting range. Might, might we want to consider having a separate, there's a lot of property over there, a separate building rather than having it inside and enclosed in the main structure? Just a thought. Guys, take it to your committee and talk about it, but that's just something I was thinking about.
Okay, did you?
That is the current design. So the current.
To have it separate?
Yep, so the current design has the. So the current design has the court building here. This white space is the parking. And most of this is the secure parking for the court and PD. And then this yellow building in the back would be the gun range that is separated from the building.
All right. That's good. Again, my apologies for...
That's all right. Do you have any other questions?
No.
And I guess I'll ask this, Ms. Walton. So we're in the very beginning stages. We, we don't have any way to fund this at this point, correct?
That's correct.
So I am committed to this. I, I know that years ago, there was discussion about setting money aside. I'm glad there's like finally some movement. I think we have to start planning now, even if we don't end up building a new facility for, you know, a few years or something. Hopefully, we can get funding through a grant or something like that to make it happen quicker. And regarding the suggestion for a committee, I think that's a great idea. I know that there's already been given feedback to come up with the initial designs. Given that we really aren't in a rush at this point, I think, you know, those designs can change as, you know, you learn more looking at what we have. And like Ms. Judge Galen said, she's looking at other communities to see what they have and what's worked for them. And as more ideas come in, I kind of want that feedback to be continuous. So I think that's a good idea, not just for the court, but also the police side of things. If, I don't know if you looked at it, Chief Haynes, and saw anything you didn't like or saw things you would change, but I'm, I'm sure you showed to other people they might, or other departments in other cities who might say, hey, this, this looks like a problem you might not notice. So I would like to see perhaps doing that, a small committee, at least with the judge and our public safety, and then maybe any other employees that you think would be working on it.
Absolutely. And it's something that we've talked about ongoing. I know AEW has done some building for some of the courts. I think Matt Burge is the individual from AEW that was working on it. So we've had conversations of actually going out to different facilities that have been built to review them, some of them that are very similar designed to ours. We haven't scheduled those again because we're in the very, very beginning stages. But that initial group that I mentioned is the cohort that is continually going to be involved in this process. But it's not a consistent every week process. It's something that has kind of taken time to develop. And after we get direction from council on kind of how we'd like, you guys would like to move forward, then we can give direction to AEW and then schedule those meetings. I think it's also something we should involve Planning Commission on. Even the external review of the building, we haven't even given, like administration hasn't given like any feedback. That's just their initial drawing, similar to other buildings within the city. So it's literally just the first draft.
Oh, Mr. Albrecht?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to volunteer to also be on that committee. I'm essentially in the trenches every single week over there. And I'm hearing from defense attorneys and their complaints and gripes. I hear from the public their complaints and gripes. So I can just take all that information and then pass along to committee. I know Judge Galen, you know, she may not hear some of the stuff I hear because I'm actually out in the lobby and walking amongst everybody. And so I'd be happy to volunteer my time as well for that, share any information that I have.
I think that makes sense. And I, by the way, I wasn't suggesting meeting every, every week or anything like that, but maybe just starting to get a committee, get a committee together to go over it. And I think administration should continue that. And at some future meetings, I think we should discuss funding options. I know that I've mentioned to some other offices of our state and U.S. representatives asking, you know, or letting them know about our needs with the project and trying to find out if there's grants out there. Wish us luck. This new drawing, by the way, does it have animal control holding in it or not?
Yes. The new drawing does. So on the first floor, on the back right section, so at the top right corner, there's an animal control garage there next to the Sallyport.
Okay. I didn't see that, so thank you. I, I think, does it make sense? Is our goal to relocate it to DPW? Or is that if we don't, or before we get this building built?
Before. And if you'd like, I can let, I know Chief Haynes and Ms. Homan have been working very diligently with some of the concerns currently with animal control and our current holding. So if you're okay with it, Mayor, if Chief Haynes can touch base on animal control.
Sure.
Yes. So our goal is to actually move it out of the PD building. First and foremost, it's not an ideal setup. I don't know if you've been to the PD and actually seen it yet, but it's a garage. And it has, it does have an epoxy coated floor. We have three kennels that are in there right now. Unfortunately, though, a lot of the water and stuff, because we have to hose down the kennels, we have to hose down the floors, that water gets pushed some to the drain, some to the outside. And the way the current property is built, that water drains right down into the location where all our police vehicles are parked. So especially in the winter, it's a real problem because it's freezing, right? Secondly, the smell inside the building. You can smell the animal shelter inside the entire police building. So that's a secondary issue. What I don't want to do is, is go to a brand-new building, and we have the same issues that we have, you know, with the current building that we have. The way it's designed in the new building is to be, again, just another garage that's within the main part of the police building. I don't think you're going to change ventilation specific to the animal shelter. So I think we're going to have some of the same issues. Although I could say that the drainage will probably be better in the new building because we'll plan for it differently. I don't think that that's going to be a solution. We did have M-DAR, which is Department of Agriculture. We had them out to our DPW looking at a room that we have cleared out. DPS has cleared out for us, and it would be suitable for an animal shelter. It's a lot bigger than what we currently have. It's bigger than what's in the drawing for the new building. We could probably get at least five to seven kennels in there rather than just the three that we have. We're constantly having issues with having more than, you know, needing room for more than three dogs. And under the state licensing, we can only hold as many dogs as we have licensed kennels for. So we're, you know, we're at the outside of what we can do as we stand right now. Next to that, too, with DPW, we know that some changes are going to need to be made. Some policies are probably put in place so that we don't have as many vehicles running. They're start, started and pulled out of the building, so we don't have any of those issues. But even with the vehicles, the way they were when we had M-DAR there investigating that room, they were, they were fine with the setup because we have double doors that close. There's ventilation on the outside wall of that room. And we could also put another ventilation, a smaller ventilation system, and it would just clean that particular room. The costs are obviously, we would need to spend money for a drain system for that room. That room does not have a floor drain system, but it would be convenient for DPW to be able to tie into the sanitary sewer so that all that is going into the sanitary sewer, not going outside the building. There's an office area that's tied to that building that could be used for adoptions and for the general public to come in and see the animals. We would then be able to have volunteers that we would utilize to clean the kennels and to clean and keep our animals clean and safe and to walk them. The nice thing about DPW, it also has an upstairs that we could eventually use potentially as a location if we were able to take in cats when necessary to keep them sight and sound separated from the dogs. And even more importantly, straight down as you go, when you come out of that room at DPW, you go straight out the building, and there's a yard area that, a couple of pieces of fencing that Darren and I have talked about as well as Kim, would allow to have an enclosed outside yard for the animals to actually go out and get exercise. I mean, it, there's a lot of potential that we have in to have it off-site so that it's not causing any issues to another building that's in use.
Okay. That, that was going to be my next question is, is, did you talk to Darren about this?
He's a dog lover. Mr. Mayor, if I may, as someone who has come occasionally on the weekends to volunteer and donate, some of the concerns that I have, when I had to get a very big dog out of a kennel, well, the garage door is open because there's no air conditioning. We actually went and had to buy big fans. This, this office actually has both air and heat. But the concern with the garage door open is you're trying to get a leash on a dog who's very excited, you know, with your hand in there to, you don't want them to run and go right out, right out the garage door. The other thing is it offers, it has hookups and offers space for a washer and dryer because currently the supplies are being tossed because they can't be washed. We can also put in a fridge. There is a large shower there for any of the big dogs. But it seems like it's, it would be a much safer setup and the fact that we could get volunteers to come and assist relief our, our animal control officers on their times off.
All right. Thanks. Did anyone else have any questions on that?
Of course I do. So it's my understanding that the dogs that, that are put in the kennels and stuff during the evening hours, say, at least there's a police officer, like a PSA, who can check in on them. Is that still correct? Because I'm just curious, the differences between police department and DPW for the animals. So currently, that's what happens, right?
Currently, that's what happens. But what we would be doing at the DPW, because it is a satellite building, a lot of the cities near us and including from where I came from in Madison Heights, we had our animal shelter dedicated and located at the DPW. And we would be putting in just a small camera system so that we can keep an eye on the kennels, keep an eye on the location to make sure that, you know, during the nighttime hours, we would have it directly right into the sergeant's office, the lieutenant command office. So if they can keep an eye on it. Plus, with the use of volunteers, we'd have, we would have volunteers coming in there a little bit later in the evening so that the overnight hours, you know, would not be quite as long either.
And then I have a couple more questions as well. Sorry to keep this topic long, but with respect to the DPW area, Darren, you probably could answer this for me. The area that they are proposing, you, you had mentioned Police Chief Haynes that we need a drainage system and we need the epoxy, the floors and stuff like that. So there's some, some cost involved to, with this, correct? In order to accommodate the animals there? Do we have a guesstimate even of what something like that would run or?
Yes. We have, we have a kind of a guesstimate. About $14,000 for the floor drainage system and about $5,000 for the epoxy coating, epoxy coating. What we would be hoping to do is if we get authorization to move forward with that, we would be looking to reach out and get donations for a significant portion of that money so it's not something that we're going to be asking for directly from general fund.
And then Darren, I think I would need to ask you this. The building, is that where you guys have your, I'm assuming, I don't know for sure, you guys have your big equipment there, like the trucks and, you know, street sweeper or something like that? I don't know.
We do. That, that building is for storage. That's where we keep the equipment that we're, we're not using street sweepers, leaf machines, coal patch machines, Showmobile. That room specifically was storage, and then we cleaned it out so we knew what we were dealing with as far as floor drains.
Okay.
Do you have more?
Yeah. How, how would you guys get into that? I'm trying to think of it. Is it, is it the building closest to Schroder off of Ten Mile there? It's the building closest to, like when I'm facing it, it's on the left-hand side, closer to Schroder?
That's correct. Yes, the furthest, yes.
So there's, there's the gates. When you go, when you approach DPW, that's that gate, that main gate. How do you get over to that building alone? Like, you know what I'm trying to say? Because they've got the trucks coming in and out of that main gate there. How would you get specifically to animal control?
You can enter right through the front doors of the building. So you, you would come into the main DPW parking lot, you'd head to the left or what would be to the east, and you just pull right in front of the building. And there's an entrance right there where you'd walk through the office area into the animal kennels.
So they wouldn't have to like share the same entrance with the others?
No, they would not.
Okay. All right. Lots to think about.
Did anyone else have any questions on that specific item? I do want to, before moving on to the next section, just touch on the direction on remaining tax reversion properties. I think that might be a lot, like a longer specific topic that council has to discuss. Do you know how many properties we have left right now?
Yes. And if I could just give you an update, we assume that it was going to be a much longer discussion. So we have, we have two houses, a couple of houses that are on hold in litigation that should be released sometime soon. One is 90% complete, one is probably 40% complete. So they're in a little bit of disarray. We have one where no work has been done. And we have about four or five vacant lots. So that's definitely, and I shared the, some of the federal litigation that's going on. It doesn't look like cities are going to be able to purchase tax-reverged properties anytime soon, unfortunately, because we've had great partnerships with Habitat and Community Housing Network. So, you know, again, some of the direction would be based on the fact we cannot, really now cannot make any profit. What would we want to do with the lots? Use them for greening or artwork that surprisingly Randy suggested? Or, you know, offering them to, again, some of the nonprofits that want to build housing. There is an interest there. There's also a market. We've had some developers buying vacant lots privately. Unfortunately, they're not the most beautiful of designs. But, so those are the kind of things that we're going to be looking for direction. So yes, maybe by next month or maybe, you know, more into March, we will have that court case resolved and then be ready to get direction to move forward.
Yes. And when we have that larger discussion, I think I might be asking for information on the other court cases, kind of maybe a summary or something. I, I want to go back and read those too, just so we all kind of understand what's tying our hands with some of these decisions.
Absolutely. Happy to.
And, and I don't know if like MML will, you know, put together information. I imagine they're keeping an eye on this stuff really.
Actually, Center for Community Progress is doing the best.
Okay.
They came out of the Genesee County Land Bank.
So I know at some point, we have to revisit our policy. We essentially aren't able or haven't been following it right now. I know my idea or my thought, initial thought on the lots, if council does want to just touch on it, I think we should build new properties on them, assuming that their size allows for it. But I'm just saying that because I know that they don't roll back the taxes when you do that, so.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, I don't know if it's going to be in the state of the state tomorrow, but I think the governor's going to call for 100,000 new homes to be built across the state. I'm assuming some sort of state funding or something is, I don't know how that's going to work, but maybe we can get in on that for these couple vacant lots then. Or plant lots of trees.
Right. Mr. Mayor, yes, that's, we're, the state is short 190,000 affordable housing units. So, and it would be great. I know that some of the nonprofits that do the affordable housing, Habitat and CHN are the only, they're called CHODOS, Community Housing Development Organizations, are the only approved ones in Macomb County. But yes, the shortage is, is critical.
Okay. So I think we just have to kind of keep an eye on that as we go forward. Any other questions? So the next category is citizen involvement and public outreach with the goal engage residents and community partners in assisting the city councils, the boards and commissions, and city staff to facilitate, facilitate the decision-making process. And the listed projects, sorry, East Point Votes, Master Plan Update, High School Student Engagement Shadowing. I'm really happy to see the shadowing on there. I really want to bring that program back. I know Roseville has, I think, a pretty well-planned-out, kind of like government day thing they do with that. Does council have any other things that they want to add or discuss? Well, then we can move on to the next category, Quality of Life. Goal: Maintain and Improve the Quality of Life for East Point residents and businesses. Projects listed here are ADA compliance with city parks, update electrical in city parks, paving, basketball court parking lot, lighting and tennis court resurfacing at Spindler, water feature addition to city park, code enforcement, light removal, tree inventory and management plan. Did anyone want to speak to any of these goals?
If I may, Mayor. Well, I know with the ADA compliance, I actually spoke with the chair of the Parks Commission today. I know an email came where someone was asking about handicap-accessible playground equipment. And so I, I know that that is a topic of conversation amongst the Parks Commissioners. And I think that when, well, one thing I would like to... And I think that when, well, one thing I would like to see just in general is when we focus on the parks to make sure that we reach out to our Parks Commissioners because they do the legwork, the community engagement, and a lot of questions that we may have, they may already have answers to. And, but I think out of respect for them and the work that they do, you know, I would like to see them just, see us reach out to them and maybe they can, we won't do like double the work that they may have already done. But that was pretty much it. I do know that they were talking about equipments and I think they have some goals going forward to where they want to bring some more accessible amenities to the parks that are ADA compliant. I know that they have some things, like I believe it's at Kennedy Park, if you look in at what are the wood chips, they are actually ADA compliant chips in the, I know around like the swing area and so forth and so on. So they, they've looked at some of the little intricacies in the parks, but they do, my understanding is that they want to bring more there. So just kind of wanted to touch on that.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. Just to comment, I'm excited about this section of this whole presentation because this, and this can involve a great percentage of our total citizens. Kids, the young people, the young adults and the adults. If we, if we could do all of this and within one year, this is going to really open up the citizens and the whole city to a lot of people doing a lot of things. So I'm really happy to see this on there. But Councilman Owens, you're right that the commission should be involved with implementing their ideas as well.
Just in that vein, the joint master plan for the parks with RARE as being, the process is beginning, and I know that they talked about the stakeholder meeting, and I think they're including all the, well, the Parks Commissions for both cities for that. So I think we'll, we'll be seeing some of that or some input from, from them over the next year going into that plan. Do we have an update or expect to know when we'll know that grant with the splash pad?
No, we did get an email where there was an error from the system that there were, like, awards that had gone out, but they were inaccurate and they have not finished the full review. They do expect it to be announced sometime this month, but it has not gone out yet. And just to highlight on a lot of the involvement, when it comes to parks, we know how important the parks are to council as well as the community. And we have been working especially with RARE. I know we have Ian that is now, he's the Economic Development Manager, he's now on the board at RARE, which is facilitating a lot of conversation between city administration and RARE. He also has agreed this week to participate as a second liaison to the Parks Commission because he's also facilitating with the CDM fellow a lot of grants that we're applying for. So we've put in for a lot of Spark Grants, a lot of different grants that have come. We've had some DNR grants that are coming up in March and April. There are two that are actually matching grants. So he'll be facilitating some conversations with the Parks Commission, Parks Commission members in relation to some of the things that they would wish to see in the coming years and the projects that they've liked to see. So a lot of grants that have been put in will be facilitating a lot of those conversations with the Parks Commission and as these projects move forward. So we have also started a board and commission liaison meeting. So all of our liaisons are getting together on a monthly basis to share updates. So we are facilitating a lot of conversation. We're trying to streamline a lot of people that are working on a lot of similar things to make sure that we're all on the same page, but all moving kind of in the same direction to achieve the goals that are set here by council.
All right, thank you. And Ian's fantastic on, on RARE, by the way. It's been really great. The last thing I want to touch on in this section was the code enforcement light removal. I don't know that this necessarily is something that would be added to the actual goal. I would like to see businesses who aren't keeping their properties clean on the main thoroughfares focus on ticketing them. I mean, I think we, we jump on individual homeowners quite quickly when our enforcers see something, but I think if businesses know they'll get tickets if they're not sweeping up or, you know, the front of their property, hopefully that can help with that. So I, I'd like to see some more of that.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
Me again. One of the issues we have with the businesses is they just pay the ticket and keep doing it. But we are fully aware of all the problems with the businesses. So we'll be transitions fully soon and really dig down on that.
All right. Did anyone else have any input? And the last category we have is government efficiency, transparency and accountability with the goal optimize services delivered to East Point residents. There's just a few things listed here, joint meetings, for example, with the, with the school board, add a state of Michigan retention policy and update records, passport agency application, updating social media policy, contract services discussion. And that last one just looks like it's more geared to looking at our individual active contracts. Is that right?
Yes, those are actually the contracts that are up this year. So just kind of getting direction prior to if we, if council wants to look at going out to bid, if we want to look at, I know we have the lawn that is coming in the coming weeks to have a discussion, but we have done a mock-up in terms of the potential of bringing that in-house. So we'll be prepared to present that to council. But if there are any other contracts out of this grouping that is up this year that you'd like to see or council would like to see, an analysis of something being brought back in-house, it'd be beneficial to know so that we can prepare those prior to preparing any bid specs and going out to bid.
I don't, I don't recall if I, I think I might have discussed it with Ms. Holman, the lawn services, bringing that stuff back in, because I think those, or Ms. Walton would need to talk about that too. It is pricey, those contracts. If there's other areas, I mean, I'm, I'm a fan of bringing anything back in-house if it's possible and feasible. I think assessing, I believe that's difficult because it's hard to find someone qualified to do that. Is that right?
Yeah, there's very few people going into that particular genre of activity and, yeah.
Okay.
Just one, just one comment, Ms. Mayor, on the joint meeting with the school board. I'm a believer in getting together. I don't know what the results will be. I don't even know what the subjects will be. And I know there might be some people who will say that we're not communicating as much as we should be. And I think just communicating with an entity that is big as we are, we ought to be meeting with them on a quarterly basis or yearly basis because I'm sure there's things that they have suggestions for that would enhance our, our table. And we would have suggestions for them that would enhance their table as well. So I think that's a good idea. And I, I think we got to plan on that sometime this year and not wait, wait for another year to get together.
Mr. Mayor, if this time I may act as Ian and I'll be quiet.
Sure.
Then I'm Ian. The Planning Commission is looking forward to a joint meeting with council at your convenience, particularly with the goals, looking forward to the future. And it is a part of our redevelopment-ready community recertification. So Ian would want me to bring that up.
Okay. I did see that part of the Planning Commission too, so I knew, knew they were looking for that. Does anyone else have anything to add?
I just have a couple of questions, I guess. So passport agency application, is that a proposal where we would offer that service here at the city offices for the residents? Like, I know Harrison Township does it, for example. And, you know, you do the whole process through the city offices? Is that what, what it would be?
Yes, so we're looking at adding it as a service to the clerk's office. And so they would provide essentially the opportunity for East Point residents or anyone that was in the local area, and this was the closest facility that they had, could stop in and process their passport application. It is a small revenue source as the fee is actually kept with the city. Our clerk's office would have to go through the process of being certified, going through all of the training, and then they would provide those services to the public.
And so there would be, there would be some benefit in terms of, there would be a cost to train the people. Would there also, would we have to renegotiate contracts for that too? Or?
No, they would actually happen still within, like, the same office hours. So there's nothing contract-wise that would change. It would just be providing another service to the community. But the contract wouldn't change, we wouldn't have to change in terms of any hours. The agency down in Detroit, the head agency that we've been communicating with is actually aware of our set hours. Some of the restrictions are if you actually publish birth certificates or provide copies of birth certificates, there's some restriction in being able to, you know, process passport applications. But based on our facility, our hours, being a government agency, being ADA compliant, we meet all of the requirements to be able to provide the service to the residents.
Do you have any other questions?
Did we not meet with the school board last year? Do you guys remember?
We've met with them quite a few times in the last few years. Maybe took the couple years off for the pandemic, but I've met with them.
I've only been speaking once a year, it used to be.
We've tried to, yeah.
Okay.
Were there minutes of that meeting? Does anybody know?
It'll be in our minutes system.
Someplace, yeah.
Did you have anything then?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And then did anyone want to add anything outside of what we have listed here?
All right. I did have one correction from what I said earlier. It was 10,000 housing units, not 100,000. But it does say 1.4 billion in funding is, I guess, the governor's request, somewhere here under MLive. So I don't know, you know, how that'll work, but maybe we can get in on that.
Well, I, I think we all know somebody that goes up there every day and sits there and she probably would be open-minded to hear our request.
Sure, maybe. All right, does anyone else have any, anything under the goal setting?
I, I think I have to go back and visit, I apologize. But with respect to the court and police building, have we, I guess this might be addressed to Judge Galen, I'm not sure. Have we checked into whether or not it's feasible for the 38th District Court to, say, do something combined, like in the 39th District Court where Frazier and Roseville have a combined court? I just didn't know if that's, I understand the workload is crazy, I understand the caseload, but I just didn't know if that was an option or if that was something that we had ever looked at.
Is that something that State Court Administrator's Office looked at? And starting this June, they're going to do a, they call it a time study, where the judge has to keep track of the time and what they do when they look at the caseload. And then they make a recommendation. The last recommendation that we had was that we were doing a workload of 1.8 judges. And there was some talk about merging with Roseville. Roseville didn't want to do with us. There's a little work in St. Clair Shores, but they look at what the workload of each of the area is and what makes sense. There's also talk about getting the state take over the funding for the courts, which would kind of change the dynamics, but it would be more even across the board for all the courts. They would look at numbers, they would fund, they would end up paying rent to the city for the building. My understanding is that just, that can't just get kicked down the road another two years, but that is something that they're looking into. But specific to your question, yes, they're going to do a time study this year and then they will make recommendations based on the numbers. They do a detailed report and, you know, will make recommendations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add to that.
Sure.
What Councilman Bishadlik said, I think this might be a perfect time with the new building to, yeah, reach out to our neighbors in Roseville and Frazier because it would, well, the last recommendation, I'm assuming, any, any combo, no matter who it is, we'd have to get the Roseville City Council and Frazier City Council on board. I think all three cities needed to pass a resolution for it to go forward. So maybe if, you know, we've got some new, new courtrooms coming and, you know, new building, and, you know, maybe they have some issues or something and we can work together on that maybe.
You mean like steal Frazier from Roseville?
Sure, or that, you know? Anything's on the table.
Just curious, sorry.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move on to Mayor and Councilwoman. We'll start with Councilmember Monaco.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's good to have this conversation each year, talking about the high-level things we try to do and do at the city level here. So thanks, Ms. Walton and everyone else at the city that put this together and thought about all the different things. It's good to review, good to talk about new topics and touch base on this, so that's all.
All right. Councilman Bishadlik.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for all their input. Certainly a lot of information, lots of great goals. I wish we had the money to fund all of them. But certainly very good information and I appreciate everybody's input and help on this. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Baker.
I got nothing.
All right, Councilman Curly.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at this whole thing about the police department and the judge courthouse, I'm excited. This is something that we can really pull together, and I would hope that we all would here sitting at this table. But I can visualize advertising, not only separate meetings with the citizens, but tours. I mean, you can tell me that the police department has got a little tiny room that they use and I can't visualize that, but if we, if we could give tours for the people, right, chief? And we give tours for the squeezed-in court building that we got that people actually have to, they're practically like, well, I won't do that, practically like this. I mean, that would be great. So I'm, I'm really excited about it. We go for bonding, that's only we were going to get people to vote yes for it. And, but yeah, as soon as we get together with that and start forming committees and figure out how we're going to advertise it, and let's not, let's not leave any stone not turned over because this is the one and only time, at least for me in my lifetime. So I'm excited about it.
All right, anything else?
No.
I have nothing. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
So, a second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Okay.
Councilmember Baker.
You shake your head, yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Bishadlik.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at?
Seven o'clock.